I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing we do is approve the agenda. Does anyone have any corrections? Changes to the existing agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
I got a motion by Dave Brusich, second by Amy Juric. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda, we are very fortunate to have three people here, well actually four, with George showing up, that are going to give a presentation on the Czech-Slovak, what is it, the 100, I'm on the committee and I don't even know. Well, we'll let them explain, 150-25. We're very fortunate to have former mayor of Montgomery Jean Keel, Fred Simon, and George McKishka, and the honorary council of the Czech Republic for our region, Mare Kucera. Welcome.
Thank you.
Yes, you're welcome.
First of all, I have to tell you this story that I'm very, I feel very pleased and privileged to be here today because my grandfather was born here in New Prague in 1880. And when I was a young child, he looked at me and said, "We are Bohemias," with such pride, that not only did I keep my birth name, both my sisters did too. So, I'm very pleased to be here, as I said, and what I want to tell you about is Czech-Slovak century. It's 100 years since the formation of Czechoslovakia, 50 years since the Prague Spring, and 25 years since the formation of the two countries, the Czech Republic and the Slovak Republic. So this is a very important year for Czechs and Slovaks. So, about a year and a half ago, the then ambassador Peter Gandelovich, who many of you have met, said to all of the honoraries, "If 2018 is a big year, go into your territories and do something." So what we're doing here in this area is we've established the website, and we've given all of you pins, and the website is on, the WWW is on, the pins, look it up. And we're trying to put everything that has anything to do with Czechoslovak on this website. It isn't just our organizations, but if a Dvorak piece, or a Martinu piece, or some music is being played, someplace goes on our website. We are in this state now five and a half million people, and actually if you combine my four states of Minnesota, Iowa, North Dakota, South Dakota, equals a little over 10 million people. That's exactly what the Czech Republic has. But this territory is 10 times the size of the Czech Republic. And so, we're very proud to be able to bring our Czech-Slovakcentury.org website. And we're hoping that sometime later this year, that not only will we be able to get the council general from Chicago to come here, but we're hoping that we might even be able to bring the ambassador later on. The actual independence of, or the formation of Czechoslovakia happened the last weekend of October. And the group down here, what I'm calling Czech Country Minnesota, New Prague, Montgomery, Lonsdale, and Vesely, are putting together a program for that weekend. And I have to say, it's been really wonderful working with the committee because there are so many of you who have had civic responsibilities, mayors, former mayors, councilpeople, and it's a great group to work with because you know how to do things. Not only do you know how to do things, but you all put on big celebrations every summer, which makes it really, the enthusiasm is here for our 100 celebration. So, we have all kinds of signs, it's on our buttons, and I'm gonna let Jean say a few things, and then I will say a few more things. I'll do that after.
Thank you. I just want to let you know the flyers you have, the kind of colorful ones, the little bit bigger bookmarks, those are compliments of the three chamber of commerce's in Montgomery, New Prague, and Lonsdale, kind of a bookmark to keep track of. Our committee's been meeting since September of last year, I think that was our first meeting. And so, some of the events that we're planning in every meeting that we have now, we're getting more honed down and specific on what's happening. But we want to enhance the genealogy displays that have traditionally been at Džíženky, Kolodžišky days, and the community days in Lonsdale. And so, our idea behind that is that people could start in July in Montgomery if they want to do a little family research, and then continue in August and September. And the Czech Genealogy Society, as well as the Czech Heritage Club here from New Prague, is working on that, and they'll be the presence. On Saturday, we're kind of honing down that weekend of October 27th and 28th. So on Saturday, the 28th, we're planning tours of the area cemeteries and churches. We're planning some way to mark the graves of our early immigrants, thinking something green, like a plant or a flower or something, that will mark on the graves, and then have a person stationed at each cemetery and to direct visitors to their ancestors' grave, and give them a little tour of the church. And maybe some food wagons, some children's face painting, or something like that at those sites. The only difference there would be St. Wenzelslaus Church itself, we would keep until Sunday because on Sunday, the 28th, we're hopefully gonna be lucky enough to get Bishop Peter Asterka, who is from the Czech Republic, he's now living in Los Angeles, to come to St. Wenzelslaus and say a mass. And that would be, we're planning that for 1 o'clock, you can say it in Czech, be a Czech mass. And then we would be, of course, inviting all our area bishops, clergy, Catholics, and all the other faiths in the area to that mass. And then, so we thought that then having the church open for a tour after that would kind of be ideal because all the people would be here already. And then following the mass, we've already reserved the St. Wenzelslaus Center, which by the way is a wonderful facility, where we would have from 2 to 6 o'clock a taste of Czech and Slovak food, so there'd be all kinds of food that could be purchased. And then, we would also have four bands, we'd kind of have a mini Battle of the Bands, that would be a band that represents each of the four Czech communities here, performing that afternoon. We aren't like an official, you know, under the IRS or anything, but we are very close to coming to an agreement with the Montgomery Arts Inherited Center to be our fiscal agent. We've already started soliciting donations from some of our area groups, like the Casey's and the Lyons and other Czech groups, and there's a few grants that we kind of have our eye on that we'll be looking at, making applications for. So I think our budget preliminarily, probably on the high side, we're looking at around probably $10,000 to $12,000 to pull this off.
And one other thing that I want to mention to the council, and this has nothing to do with 100. This has to do with the South Bohemia region in the country of Czech Republic is now realizing that here in Minnesota, we have, there are a lot of people whose ancestors came from South Bohemia. And this notice came to me from the embassy in Washington. And so then I was put in touch with some people in South Bohemia, Chesky Krugla. And what, they're having a conference this year, May 23rd and 25th, and I just learned about this a month ago. Well, unfortunately, you know, we can't just turn around on a dime and decide that we're going to go on a trip to the Czech Republic on that kind of a notice. But this same group had a conference two years ago. So I would like to write back to these people and say, "This is a great idea. We would love to participate in 2020." So that everybody has a chance to learn a little bit more about this and think about sending representation from this area. They want not only those of us who are descendants, but they also want some movers and shakers from the community. And that's why I'm presenting the idea to the city council, so that you can think about it, and in two years. And Michael gave you sheets from this, so that you can take a look at it. And you can go to the WWW, and it is translated into English. Now, it is translated into English, so it's not going to be necessarily the easiest to read. You have to read slowly to get the gist of it. But I think it would be a wonderful opportunity to go back to the area where many of our ancestors have come from. And at this point, do any of you have any questions now about 100? About our 1918 to 2018 Czech-Slovak century?
Any questions or any comments?
No, just wondering who your grandfather was.
My grandfather was Joseph J. Kucera. And I'm not related to every single Kucera in this area, but most of them.
Oh, Dr. Kucera, that was him?
Yes, that was my dad's first cousin.
Okay, knew him.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
No, thank you.
No.
The main line that was a concern, you can kind of see it on the map overhead, the two dashed red lines that ran through the park, the existing location of the Stormsir Line, the Memorial Park. So that obviously ran kind of right through the area, excuse me, right through the area where Memorial could have been located, and we had kind of a smaller triangle shaped area that had been identified. So we had an city engineer review the Stormsir Line as it was located, again, between these two dashed red lines on the overhead. And it was determined that due to the age and condition of the line, that this is a good candidate to move that Stormsir Line at this time to a new location within the park, basically lined up with the low point of the road on Main Street, which is generally this point here, as you can see on the map. It's kind of an overlay of the reconstruction plans that are shown here. The road pavement, yellow, Boulevard, green, and then purples where the sidewalk would be proposed to be of the reconstruction project. Let me just jump in around here. See, you can kind of see on the overhead here, the new route that SEH, who's the city's engineer, who's also obviously working on the downtown 2020 project, is to reroute the Stormsir Line in alignment with this new green route here. The red circles are the manholes for the new route. And again, line that up at the low point where the reconstructed low point will be in Main Street, basically lead to the west side of the drinking fountain. And that opens up a roughly 60 foot by 60 foot area that is identified on the overhead. So that is the area we are comfortable with setting aside for the memorial. I think it passed depictions, it was roughly a 40 by 50 foot area. But this would be a little larger than that. The park board reviewed this possible location as well in their March 13, 2018 meeting. The park board had reviewed this last year as well. And their main concern was ensuring room was left over for the expansion of the park area, playground area, keeping visibility to Main Street, to the playground. And then obviously we want to have a little separation to the memorial so none of the kids necessarily using it as a playground. So this keeps a little separation for that as well. So again, that is the identified location. We're very confident that that will be available and not affected by any utilities with the reconstruction. The other discussion that kind of came into play as well was the existing drinking fountain in the park. It's identified that this drinking fountain was put in about 1990. Those of you that have been around lining up, recall that the playground used to be located up closer to the drinking fountain, Memorial Park closer to Main Street. That was before it was reconstructed in its current location. But the drinking fountain's kind of in the middle of a grassy area. It is an older brand fountain. We do not have the ability to get parts for this fountain any longer, and it is in a situation where we're kind of doing what we can to keep it running. And staff and as well as the park board recommend moving the drinking fountain so that we can have a new ADA fountain in the park. That also provides a bottle filler, but to relocate that in a more convenient location between the playground area and the softball shelters, it's just off the edge of the air photo here. So that's a convenient location again for ADA accessibility. Can be used by softball field users, can be used by the playground users because again, everybody has to go to the bathroom, and Memorial Park heads to this area anyway. So it'd be a much more convenient location for that fountain to be moved to. Again, moving the fountain doesn't necessarily open up any more room for Memorial Area, but it would provide more of a clean slate in that area of the park in general and just provide a more convenient location. So, again, we would recommend that that fountain be moved outside of the 2020 reconstruction project. There's a number of issues that come into play with the federal funding that we have in association with the 2020 construction project. So, park board, I talk about making that a 2019 park board project to move that fountain from the area. But in summary, we're looking for council concurrence on the 60 by 60 location that's identified on the map, and basically providing direction to staff on moving forward with preparation of legal documents to lease the property to the Legion of Legion Company, American Legion, if that location determine to be settled through the council.
Has anyone talked to the Legion at all?
I have had conversations periodically with Paul Bush.
Okay, and they're fine with that agreement? In theory?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm just wondering if it would make sense to wait just a little longer on the preparation of the documents, just to see how the fundraising progresses? Because once those documents are signed and that property is leased, then does that create any issues for the city park workers mowing the area or for the upkeep of that particular area?
No, we would put an effective date or start date with that group so that it would be done in conjunction with the start of the construction project.
The 2020?
Yeah, well, yeah, when they would need it or want to start working the site, then we'd identify what that would be. So I don't think, we wouldn't do anything to handcuff this in between now and the start of when they would be needing their project and our 2020 project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
As best as you can see from Ken's drawing there is that it's approximately on the east side of that sidewalk, we won't say exactly, but approximately. So if they were to take a look at that, if you look at the step back from the proposed new sidewalk in purple, as to where the property line is, it's kind of where the edge of the triangular shape of the sidewalk would be adjacent to the east side in the 60 by 60 foot rectangle.
The sidewalk, would the sidewalk be ripped out though?
We would take that out.
That one, okay.
But for purposes of, if they want to go out there and look at it, we could even stake it out very simply, just by roughly like 60 feet out of the sidewalk.
Any other questions or comments? So Mike, you need us to make a motion and concur with moving forward and?
Basically, it's the concurrence of the sites and direct preparation of documents with the Legion.
Okay, I'll make said motion.
I'll second.
Second by Maggie Bass. Any other questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Thank you. Jim?
Council, honorable mayor, tonight I have before you, we budgeted for a new squad park for 2018, and put out for bids on March 9th. I received a bid from Jeff Belzer, New Prague Ford. And also, the state contract was awarded to Ford of Hitting. And I have those two prices down there. You can see that the difference of the two prices are about $86.55, with the Belzers just being slightly over the state contract. I think when you weigh that out, I would recommend purchasing the vehicle from Jeff Belzer just because of proximity, keeping the local business within the community we serve. And also, it does allow for inspection of the vehicle prior to final acceptance with it. Any questions about it?
So it looks like it's gonna take three or four months, or you know, to proximity that vehicle ready?
Yeah, it'll take 60 to 90 days for delivery, and then we'll have to set up changing of the equipment. Once the equipment is switched over, I believe the vehicle's gonna be going to the city for a fleet vehicle, for everyone who uses them. We'll strip off the graphics from it, and then be available for city personnel to use.
Are we getting rid of that old car then?
Barb can tell you this. It's the grandest of cars. She's gonna be disappointed when we get rid of it.
That's my right.
I know, I says, you see a car down Main Street, you go, "Here comes Barb."
It doesn't have a saber, but she haunts the horn.
That's just to make sure everyone gets out of your way, right?
That's right.
Okay, any questions? Okay, if not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve purchase of a new police vehicle from Jeff Belzer.
So whom?
Second. Okay, I got a motion by Dave Brusich, second by Sean Ryan. There's no other further comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Mike, I think you're taking this one for Patty, who is under the weather.
No, she went home this morning, so. If there's any questions, we'll table it and bring it back in the next meeting. But I don't think we'll need to, as Patty has laid it out, she would tell you that her recommendation is at the bottom of the number, if you want the short version. And you know I can't miss the opportunity. We had a positive net income for the year at a little over $261,000. A lot of that dealt with our activity on the building front this last year was one of the major contributors. As you recall, earlier this year, we purchased a Parks vehicle that was a carryover from last year. So we have to at year end reserve that $34,000 for the purchase of that Parks Department vehicle that we've already bought this year. And in there, Patty has some additional changes as far as decreasing or increasing. The decrease is the contribution that we moved to the Fund 499 for a portion of the city's contribution on the Zero Depth Indoor Swim Pool with the school district. So that gets moved out of the fund balance into that Fund 499 this last year. Essentially, the balance of what we're dealing with is we have plugged into a city hall replacement project, subject to future decision by the council. The increase, you can see with what I already mentioned, we no longer are going to purchase the tabulator, that was reserved with the sewer county. But as you recall, you entered into an agreement earlier this year with them, where we're gonna pay them so much a year to participate in the election equipment with them. The increase in the future athletic complex is the proceeds that come annually during the Džíženky, riptide softball point benefit that's held during Džíženky. And then the requirement that in the policy decision that you made is that we budget out of our fund balance 50% of the current year expenditures. And so, we have to take that into account, and there's a slight increase to do that. So, the primary increases are in that, and the balance of that going to the city hall replacement. And this is needed for audit purposes, so when the audit comes forward, that you would make these decisions on the delineation of the fund balance.
The decreasing or moving the funds to the $495,000, is there, is that?
That was already done last year.
Is that, does that complete that transaction then of the million one?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any questions?
Maybe not as short, but hopefully just as quick.
No, you did a fine job. Okay, if there's no questions, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the changes of redistributing the general funds.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passes 5-0. Next, we're very fortunate to have the president of the golf board, Tom Mock, here today to kind of give us a little request.
Tom got it by default. We also pretend it wasn't available, and the weight from GME wasn't available, so we put it on Tom, and see as a fraud shield.
Yeah, and got the short straw.
Your words, not mine. Oh yeah, thank you for taking the time tonight. Basically here to discuss the purchase of a new Fairway mower for the golf course. Last couple weeks ago at our meeting, Jeff gave us the documentation as far as the purchase of the new Fairway mower, the reasons for it. I'll highlight some of the reasons we are looking to purchase the new mower, or I guess the old mower, and where that is at. Currently, that Fairway mower that we're looking to repurpose is 16 years old. It has over 3,600 use hours on it. And then, per Jeff, basically said the repairs we'd have to make to it this year are well beyond its actual value. If we trade it in with the new purchase of the mower, we're only looking at about $500 at most. The repairs Jeff was looking to make, there were some reel issues and some lift arm issues. He said multiple thousands of dollars would have to be spent to repair that mower for use this year. So with that said, it's over its useful lifespan, the amount of dollars it would take to get it to working order, that is the main reasons why Jeff has brought this proposal. In the documentation provided to you, Jeff did some comparison between the Toro model, and I believe the Jacobson model. And he is selecting the Toro 3555D, and there's a number of reasons given in his documentation. Basically, we are looking to repurpose the current Fairway mower because trading it in is not really worthwhile. Again, only that $500 amount we're looking at. They're actually gonna repurpose that mower on the driving range, use it for picking up golf balls on the driving range. And the current driving range cart is gonna be reused in Jeff's maintenance fleet. So he does foresee getting some more useful life out of that engine in that Fairway mower. So that will help their, you know, use of vehicles out on the maintenance staff. So with all that said, there's also some information in your package as far as future capital expenditures and our debt schedule. I don't have much to say on that. Mike's gonna be putting, we didn't have a full picture of where this new debt would fall into line with our existing debt and future planning. So Mike was gonna be doing some legwork on that. But we still felt confident that we can fit that into our current debt picture and with the transfer that the council currently does, and make that work. So at the last meeting, obviously the recommendation that is in your package was approved or recommended by the golf board to move forward with the purchase of the new Fairway mower.
And I think also adding to that is that the reason Jeff preferred the Toro mower over the Jacobson was maintenance, I think it's an easier machine to maintain, and also some of the hydraulics and that stuff seem to work better. And they've had, they've tested all four of these units, and they felt that this one definitely, even though it was a little bit more expensive, it is under budget, it's $49,000 versus the $52,000 that we had on our budget. But it, he seemed that it felt it was easier to change rollers and things like, and the blades and that stuff. So in the long run, he felt that they would recapture that.
Since I'm not a golf person, is this a special mower just for a Fairway? Or is it just a regular mower that you set at a certain height and?
It's a special mower, and it better be for its cost. But yeah, they set the reels at those specific heights, and I don't believe they change those much all year long. We have specific mowers for the rough, specific mowers for the fairways, and specific mowers for the tee boxes and greens.
And the only reason I was asking is I made a little note to myself is that, does the state of Minnesota? the state of Minnesota have a contract, you know, where like the squad car, you can get some special pricing, but I probably answered my own question that they don't because it is a special equipment?
And there's probably not a lot of communities that have golf courses, so there probably is no state contract for that reason.
Tom, it talks about a ranger in here on the course. What's a ranger?
I believe that is, that's the discussion as far as our Golf Board survey. So that would be, that would be someone actually employed by the golf course and helping speed along or take care of golf course issues.
Keep the.
Pace of play.
Keep going.
Correct.
And. We do not have one at present.
Correct.
And that's, over the course of decades, we have had that functionality, but the ebb and flow of, you know, good years, bad years, that's definitely been one of the casualties. Depending on how busy the course is, that need is, you know, varies. Obviously, in a light day or middle of the day on a Wednesday, we really don't need to employ someone for that role. But yeah, we have not had a ranger for quite a few years.
And again, that was just something brought up in the survey. The Golf Board really hasn't decided if it was gonna go forward with a ranger, or if there's other ways to kind of make sure that you keep pace of play up. You know, the rule of thumb is you should always keep up with the group in front of you.
Correct.
And obviously, sometimes that doesn't work, and it becomes a harder issue, especially on a Sunday afternoon and that stuff, when you do invite families to be out there. And obviously, you want the game to grow, so you obviously have to have that opportunity, and you gotta, you know, obviously, kids learning how to play the game and things like that do slow up the pace of play. But as long as people who are playing at that time understand that, and the people who are slower do let the, you know, the faster groups go through, it usually works on itself. But again, that's something that came through the survey that, you know, maybe they thought a ranger might help pace the play. Again, it would be something, because I was a ranger way back when. But that was something, you know, maybe more on weekend golfing. Obviously, you don't have it on a Thursday night because it's pretty full, and it's a men's league, and it's all, you know, we let six sons go out at that time, so it really wouldn't make sense to have a ranger per se for that.
Yeah, I think it would make sense for the golf course to really look at that as an additional expense. We really were seeing problems. It's obviously a want that came out of the survey, but Kurt would be, Kurt and Wade would be a little better to talk on the golf operations side of things, but, you know, I don't think there's a lot of problems with excessive length of rounds for, you know, players or consumers that are there. I don't think people are not coming to New Prague Golf Course because of the pace of play. If that were to be an issue, then I think definitely the Golf Board would be looking at that, you know, more in depth.
From the way you described it, it sounds as though it's, if people are courteous, let somebody play through, then it really won't be much of a need.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's part of the education process too, in letting people know that, you know, it's common courtesy to, you know, if you're slow and things like, because sometimes you get a twosome foul and a foursome, you know, to, obviously, their foursome's gonna play slower, so it's. Any other questions for Tom?
Who does the, I don't know if it's for Tom, the maintenance on these?
We do the maintenance on these.
But who, is it the same, like for the Parks, or they?
No.
You have that employed, Mike?
So Mike, but are they, if you would, I'm just wondering on the equipment, like, for reference, like, what do the Parks use?
The Parks uses what we would term rotary mowers.
No, but like brand, Toro's?
Or you've gone to the Toro's on the course as well.
Okay, all right, okay. That's what I just wanted to verify.
Well, I think we actually had a John Deere, and we've had problems with it.
I know they're different equipment, I just know usually they, once they're used to a piece, they know how to fix it.
Right. The larger big ones we have, that they've gone to the Toro's as well, and so that interaction, you know, we have good work between the two parks.
Okay, all right.
And I think Mike helps service those machines also, the mechanic at the golf course.
Yeah, I know, Mike.
Yep. Any other questions? So Mike, why don't you kind of give us your ideas that I know you and Patty talked about regarding the financing options?
We're not certain as we sit here today. We wanna look a little bit further. They have one more piece of equipment that to receive quotations on. There is, as you take a look at the outstanding debt issue, that there's a certain balance amount available for operations after subtract the existing principal interest is picked up in operations. So all we're looking at here is what's left for principal if we make the contribution that we typically do every year. And so we've got some dollars in 18, 19, and 20, and at this point, we're trying to decide whether we do an internal fund loan from the general fund, and the golf course again, maybe for a few years, or we do it as a temporary one year till next year. We're likely coming back with 2019 street recon projects over on the east side, east of Columbus, and so depending on what the size of that issue is, is we might incorporate it into that debt to do it, so we're kind of looking at both of those options right now. If we choose to do that, then we'd have to, at one of the next meetings, we'd have to adopt a resolution of intent to reimburse, so that we cover ourselves there to be able to include it in that, and so we're trying to analyze which is the most cost-effective way to do it. So your action to that is just the purchase? We'll put together in the next, in the next meeting or the following meeting what we would choose to do financially. But you can see it gets a little thin in '21 and '22 and '23, which may result in some reprioritization of capital improvement, I think, within the golf budget, unless we have good years in there where we could maybe go to fund balance. But at this point, as far as stretching the city contribution that has been made available for the purchase of equipment, we get a little thin there in '21, '22, and '23. So we'll have to work with that with the Golf Board and/or Jeff to see what we do, unless the council is inclined to increase that contribution.
And again, this capital list that Jeff put together is exercise that we've asked all departments to do.
He's done his best, taking a look at the normal replacement cycles, depending upon what condition they're in, and whether it makes more sense that that's his ideal desires, but we always try to take a look at that and see where we can stretch that or move that. You can see, kind of halfway down, I came in 2008, and so they had done some issuance of debt in '08, and everything since then I've been involved with, but everything prior to that was pre-existing. So we've got a few remaining big pieces in the next three to five years before we get back to that level where we've got some available balance to work with. So it'll just be a matter of reprioritizing and replanning some of those purchases likely.
I believe, was it last year or the year before, we didn't not have capital and couldn't extend?
Well, last year we did the carts.
We did the carts.
So the year before, we did not.
The only year we really didn't, as I look back, is about 2009. I think '08 was the least purchase that we redid, and we've got '11, '12, '13, '14, '15, '16, and '17.
Yeah, what came to mind is that we didn't put Jeff off, but we did, in the sense he had, he had, I believe, this spend for last year, but because we were doing carts, which were in urgent need, we did not do any spend on the maintenance side of things.
Any other questions for Mike or Tom?
The last piece that we just happened to include, Tom, I was in the newspaper this past week, was an update of the survey that the Golf Board had done, and so it was just the opportunity since Tom was here, I just threw it in the package, and you can see we got some pretty good commentary.
And I did notice that was in the paper for last week, so thank you, Patrick. I thank Chuck, if he was the one who made that decision, and some of the positive things that we have going out there, we do have a little bit more Facebook activity. We have a couple of board members that are now administrators and are putting stuff out there, and we're trying to work on more communication with our members and hopefully continue the growth of golf in New Prague, or get more people involved in the sport. Any other questions? Okay, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the fairway mower, Toro.
So whom?
I'll second it. So I got a motion by Dave Brusick, second by Chuck Nicolai. If there's any other questions or comments?
Here, I might add, if both the maker and the seconder is that although it's in the materials of the recommendation from the superintendent, it was not included in my recap on the recommendation, maybe it might be appropriate to add that we retain the old fairway mower and repurpose it as recommended by the superintendent.
Okay. Is that okay?
That's fine, yes.
I amend that motion as you did so, I'll go and state it.
All right, thank you.
And I will amend my second there. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mock.
Call back on February 5th, the council had approved a portion of 514 East Main Street to be purchased, a .73 acre parcel. And in that purchase agreement, it had a schedule for the closing February 28th or before. Obviously, we've come and gone, we have not closed up the property, and that was due to unforeseen circumstances that were not within the city's control, and I won't go into the details of that any further, but it's nothing the city did or didn't do to have that closing occur. So a couple of things that we have for action tonight related to that are, number one, a resolution that would extend the purchase agreement to have the closing before, on or before April 30th of 2018. That is resolution number one. And we, as far as we're hearing from the sellers, that we're hoping that will actually occur this time. Item number two actually does relate to being able to close up the property. During the title company review of the documents that we had approved, one thing they noted, we had basically approved the lot split in the resolution that had approved the sale of the property, had one line in there that allowed the lot split to occur. The title company wants a separate resolution to document the approval of that lot split. So nothing's different, it's just they wanted a separate resolution to document that rather than have it in the purchase agreement resolution that we had approved back on February 5th. So resolution number two basically is again, giving your blessing and approving that minor subdivision to split the lot into the two portions which we had previously approved back on February 5th, that would allow the city to obtain the .73 acre parcel adjacent from Memorial Park, so.
Does the resolution that we do with the lot split, if the deal does not go through, does that go away, or how's that?
It's really only set up that if the seller, excuse me, the buyer does not purchase it from the seller, then Ken, I don't believe that's filed a record, that that would only get filed and made of record if the purchase transaction goes through and then we purchase the property from the new owner.
So it's the transaction that.
Two parts.
Triggers this, it would be the transaction between the seller and the buyer, third-party people, not relating to the city.
Correct.
So then once that transaction done, then the resolution splitting that lot would go into effect, and then we would purchase that lot?
Then it would be filed and become effective, basically in that order, as you don't, without that happening, then no.
Our purchase and payment of the purchase of the property would not occur until all of that is done.
Okay.
This time I specifically want this in this order as well, extend that purchase agreement and then minor subdivision, just title company being very particular in this case.
And obviously, it looks like our city attorneys have blessed us.
Correct.
For resolutions, okay.
Written the memo and everything.
Good.
Because the purchasers have requested all this, are they paying the legal fees then?
They are paying the fees for these additional items.
Any other questions?
As we know, yeah, these are out of our hands at this point, so.
And we feel pretty good that this thing definitely will close?
I sure hope so. We thought, first time.
Well, yes, I realize that. I was just waiting for the phone call. Chuck, can you come meet me and we sign some papers? But it just never happens, so. Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to redo the, extend the purchase agreement, do that in two parts. Second. Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. And then I guess I'll make a motion, a second motion, changing the, what is it, the plat?
You're reapproving the minor subdivision as its own resolution.
Okay.
We already approved it once.
Okay. Ken said it very well, but I, that's my motion.
Second.
Got a second by Maggie Bass. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? All right, good. Hopefully that's, it will get done. Just in time to start cutting it and maintaining it. Next, consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions or items?
Just in the utilities meeting minutes, it's listed that President Commissioner Bishop, Bush, Jurk, Jordan, and Skol, and it says absent Skol, but there was no, I don't know if he arrived late or if he left early.
It was in there, it was corrected before these minutes.
Oh, before this one was given to the packet?
Last week, yeah. He was there.
Okay, all right.
You're not approving, the only minutes that you're approving are council.
Right, right. I just wanted to show that that was.
I just wanted to show that he read the resolution to the end of the packet.
Yeah.
Just kidding, Chuck. Any other questions or items on any of the AP or minutes? They look pretty good. If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Miscellaneous, we're doing that part already. Patrick? Nothing?
Nothing.
Okay. Kenny, anything? No? Okay. Mitch?
I'm good.
Okay. Oh, I thought I'd get the thumbs up, but we're actually good. Jim, anything?
Just an update on the hiring process. We did written tests last week for 45 candidates of the 51 that had applied, and then on Wednesday we will be doing a phone interview. So the following week, we'll do an oral interview, and then we'll look at having some of the top candidates fill out background packets and start a background.
Has Yash already left?
Yeah. February 12th was his resignation day.
Is that okay? Overtime costs or anything, trying to cover his shifts or?
Uh, slightly here and there a shift, but generally, we're maintaining with just lower numbers, as we have for half of 17, so.
But you'd obviously have dollars available from an officer's salary that are available should that be needed.
Anything else, Ken?
That'd be time and a half though, versus just straight time. So essentially, we catch up.
But you still have, normally, we have that officer budget for 40 hours a week, so even if there was some time to have.
It's minimal, very minimal.
All right.
Nothing else.
Okay, Bruce?
Just a quick note, as you're aware of, we sent out letters in regards to the service territory for information to the customers that be affected. I've received, I think, about five calls from customers and answered their calls and their questions, and been communicating with the manager of Minnesota Valley Electric, and communication lines have been very open and been very good to work with, so it's progressing.
Okay, good.
Can I ask my add-on? As this goes on the website, if you haven't been on there, the utilities has some new features, and it's sort of clearer, so if you have calls, you can direct people to there too. We've also put more information out there.
On the city website?
Yes, then you go to utilities. Yes, then you go to utilities, yep.
Yep. I tried to make that a little easier to follow and some of the new programs that mainly affect the Minnesota Valley customers, if they're, if they've been doing some of the Energy Wise programs and so, we've built programs to keep those intact, so.
Okay, good.
Did anybody see this, that analysis?
Years?
Yeah. Did all the council get a copy of that?
Did you send it to everyone?
I did not.
That was really kind of for you, so.
Well, I thought Bruce was going to.
I did, I didn't share your, you're welcome to mention it, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say that I, had I been a New Prague Utilities customer through seventeen from January through December, my bill would have been actually seventy-three dollars less when totaled up. So the rates are actually lower than MBEC.
And Bruce is, I gave Bruce my information today, so I will share that with you guys too, because I'm part of the Energy Wise program and things like that, so. And it kind of gives just people flavor, so.
Yep.
Okay. Thanks, Bruce. Ken?
I don't have anything.
Michael?
We've probably seen there on the fourth floor, I'll skill Ken's thunder a little bit, that they're starting to put the fourth floor on our senior housing project in town. We believe that they've got an office coming, it's not open yet, but it should be coming.
It's the old mobile link wireless space in the East Town Plaza strip mall. So if you get, eventually, if you have questions or people want information on leasing and other information, other than the phone number, we could actually direct them to their office location. That's temporary, basically, till they open up sometime at the very end of this year, early twenty-nineteen.
But if you haven't been following the construction, they're now on the fourth floor, so.
I know I was driving down, was that tent there? Can't even see, hardly see the water tower anymore. Changing.
That's all I had.
It's very awesome though, very nice. That's it, Mike?
Yes.
Okay. Barb, anything?
We're collecting applications for the boards and commission positions, open positions. I did provide all of you information on the open positions. And if you could, for the next council meeting, bring your calendars so we can begin scheduling the interviews.
How's the response been?
Low, that, I think we've got only about five in hand as of right now. So we've done more marketing than we've typically done in the past, but numbers are down. You can see we're looking for two EDA members, three on the golf board.
Well, Tom, oh, he left by now, don't worry.
Yeah, some of will be able to.
We'll, we'll coerce some of these people back.
And when I say this, those are vacancies, whether they're an existing member or a true vacancy. They are terms to make appointments for. So we've got three on the park board and then one youth representative on the park board, one planning commission member, and one utility commission member. So we'll be touching base with all the existing members to make sure they know that this occurs as well as we've tried to advertise, newspaper, radio, cable TV, on the website, so we've done pretty much just as much as we can. This has typically gone in cycles and so I don't know whether there'll be a mad dash at the end, due date is Friday, April thirteenth, I believe, isn't it?
Yes.
As Barb has on your schedule. And then again, depending on how many candidates we have, because we just want to talk possible interview options based on the number of candidates that we have. So look at your calendars, figure out which of those dates might be possible. We just kind of pick Mondays, off Mondays, whether you tie it into or before a council meeting. Some of that has kind of worked at times, but trying to allocate it at times, maybe we're doing it in one night possibly. So we just need to know what works for you and what your desires are at the next meeting on the sixteenth.
Hard for you, really, you guys just have four active members?
Yeah, Ken did, she did, Margaret did, sent her resignation.
No, I, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure why I read that way, but no. And Courtney's still on till, they're, Courtney and Margaret are still on till.
Okay, yeah, so we don't know if they're going to.
I, I don't know if they're going to renew or not.
Okay. But that's not vacant?
It's irrelevant, really, we need to get applications.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, I put a plug, the, I had to write the newsletter for the April answer, so I put a plug in for the park board.
Is there a age limit for the, the requirement for the youth?
They cannot be in, they can't be a senior right now, because obviously, they would graduate and then not make it to here. So junior or younger.
But they, oh.
They just need to be a high school student.
A high school student.
And if they can make most of those meetings on a Tuesday.
Okay. And the time you changed to six, right?
Or?
The time of the park board now are six?
They said six, yes.
Okay. And we will be sending additional information back out to the high school just to see if we can regenerate interest that way as well.
Okay. Anything else, Barb? Good job of putting this together, thank you. Sean?
No, I'm good.
David?
The only thing I have to mention is I don't think I'll be at the April sixteenth meeting. It's almost a positive.
Okay, so you'll be, we'll just pick you on what park board, you've got the new park board guy, yeah?
No, I'm just kidding.
Anything else? Maggie?
No, nothing.
Amy?
I have one thing and I know it's Jim and Glenn. A resident on Main Street in front of Memorial Park was concerned with the crosswalk there, that they're having issues with cars not stopping or people just going out without looking. I don't know if it can be, I know we've talked about remarking it, doing things different for the twenty-twenty project. I don't know if you have any temporary solutions or anything that can be done.
We used to have the temporary crosswalk signs. I think they're up in the street department, and I don't know what kind of condition they are in, but we look at that.
And I told the resident too, with the snow, nothing's going to go if they do put those signs out again, it might go out while the snow is out there.
Yeah.
Just to let you know, I did have some concern.
I'll check on those tomorrow with Matt, and then I'll also bring it up at our meeting to try and do some extra patrol there.
Okay, thank you.
But I see that a lot with my office right there, you know. It always seems one car going one way stops and the other one doesn't, it's, it's, it's...
I know there's no quick solution.
No, but I, trust me, we've had a few squealed tires that everywhere, goes to the windows and sees them. Okay, anything else?